What's up everybody, this is the poker coaching study session today we're doing out of position deep stack work. But what we learned so far, we learned that out of position pair boards are the best for us, especially high pair boards. Worst for us are low connected boards. Like six five four is really bad for uh on out of position here and then. Boards like ace. Ace three do's ace four five with a flush draw are also not very good for out of position. Oh, take a check. Flush comes in. After check check, I think we value better a little bit now, what do you guys say?
Mix, I might check again.
Check or what?
Check or thirty-three or?
Okay, well. It's a check. We gotta value bet at least once, right? So what is it gonna be very small or? Off pot?
Feel like if we go small, they're more inclined to uh to throw a lot of bluffs at us.
Which is gonna be tough with our hair, right? We're gonna have to, we're gonna be in a pick.
Any single spade.
Maybe just block that small. I think it's small.
Okay, bug that small. And just.
We got paid by a queen.
So king ten here?
I haven't looked at these in a long time, but uh like king. Seven king six and cash games are four bets.
Not here.
Okay. And going back to the last hand, like yes, when we bet small, we will get bluff sometimes, but. It's not a reason to not use that sizing if it's the best sizing.
Two eight. Sounds like a call to me. Oh, what a wonderful flop.
In progress.
Oh, look at this, two big blinds.
Just a fold.
Even for two?
Yep. With so many pairs to call with.
Hello, how Nick?
What's up Kelly?
How are you man?
Good, how you guys doing?
We're good.
We banked him.
He has to check, I think he saw her hand.
Yeah, when we when we peeled that he got a little sneak peek.
He has a read or something. Are we checking again? So three that uh your range wants to check, I think, am I wrong?
I don't think so, not blocking diamonds.
I think uh without. It'll check some, but I think we're mostly betting. I think it's probably checking like thirty percent. This is the part of our range that doesn't really wanna check. I mean, you could try to check raise, I guess. I don't know if that's right, though. What's what size though uh? Half quarter. Like big, 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 big. Yeah, you're polarizing here when you're betting. Okay, since we're never betting, we gotta bomb it when we do.
Look, pocket.
He's just gonna fold, though, yeah. We get action from his pocket aces.
Feels like a check to me. Oh. Is it range, is it the? Two sets room? For fifty fifty, mostly betting small.
Like you're betting most small with most of your aces and your draws, right?
Yeah. And you wanna polarize a little bit. Yeah, you wanna polarize with the spade in your hand maybe? Alright, so we can bet big here or bet small? Phew, pocket deuce.
Similar to the ace ten eight from before.
So ace low low rainbow, this is pure check for us. Then the range. Range is checking pure. Almost.
So if he bets, what are we doing?
Think you gotta call once?
Depends on what his sizing is, right?
Yeah.
So.
If he bets mini, we can peel. If he bets anything above like thirty-three percent, we're just done, I guess.
If you have the king or queen of spades, is that more of a fault? If he bets.
I I kinda meant on the flop. We check if he bets on the flop.
Well, we can see.
Yeah, it'd be great. I get in this spot a lot.
Fifty fifty, which means you probably should follow.
Yeah.
And then spade seems to be the one you want to continue with the least, am I wrong?
Yeah, it takes away some of his uh backdoor bluffs.
Ah. But she added. Ah, not gonna continue. We can speculate here a little bit. Facing a three bet. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Keep three betting us. Keep turning over the the hands.
Let's play this one.
Yeah, no way.
Why not? It's in there.
See?
You can make a lot of money in three bed pots.
Try in position as the aggressor.
Yeah, I tried that and then I wanted to level up to the hard mode.
Nick, are you still playing a lot of cash?
That's Danny, I know they sound similar and Nick, I think Nick is around as well, but he's sleeping on the K board.
I just wonder if he's playing any four hundred, five hundred big blind cash games.
I think he's he's back back in tournaments right now, he's uh. So.
He was at my table ACR yesterday.
Yeah, he was hoping Ken was punt was gonna punt it off, but then I I told him, are you on the bubble? I I just told him, make a chippy replay on the bubble, you're gonna get Ken every time.
He sucked out on me, you got he double I doubled him up, he had age five, I had.
I know, he said it, he said it. Uh, you didn't say it like that, though, you didn't call it the psycho.
Yeah, he sucked out.
Hmm. Nice, can you wanna check or bet here?
I wasn't watching, so we're under the gun versus button to one of our worst aces, so I'm gonna check.
Okay.
Gonna call.
Check, you wanna leave?
Nope.
Never.
No, he's got tens.
Okay.
And range.
Wanna block that?
I do not.
Well, you think you should consider it, no?
I should, but I'm not.
Check, check on the turn, you got top pair.
Yeah, I know, it's whatever, like, it's a tough spot. I I don't really wanna call a bet either, but I don't think I have.
These are a bit fold, no?
Yeah, I think you're probably right, but I'm still checking.
I would check here too, but I've been convinced a little bit.
Hmm. You guys are right.
I don't know, that's one of those ones where. It's not always so easy to figure out.
We're gonna play this one.
So you should look what you should have looked at what the worst ace we bet there is, cuz like ace nine maybe wants to start betting.
I think we typically won't block bet if we're not gonna get called by worse, even if we it's like annoying to face about, we're still just gonna check.
So pair board with with a flush completed, I don't think we're value betting many aces. Right? This is two pair, this is.
Yeah, ace nine starts betting some, I thought it might, it's not a flush, no. Can't be flush, yeah, but.
General idea feels like it's too dangerous to bet the ace here. Unless you have his game, you know?
Yeah.
Right, playing this one, happy days. Let's see what he has.
Yeah. Uh.
It's uh. Pretty bad, right?
Nailed it.
Looks looks like unless he goes ten percent, yeah, where I think we're out.
Yeah, fold.
Alright.
Alright.
Ace mid, low, not great, not good, I say.
Lot of checking.
What do you think range does fifty fifty or like seventy thirty? Seventy percent check or fifty percent?
I think fifty fifty with the ace.
More like more like eighty twenty.
I think it's seventy thirty, seventy percent check.
Yeah.
Yeah. Seventy was right on.
This is getting interesting, right? Cuz he didn't treat bad. King is the best card for us when he doesn't treat bad.
Is this low enough that we wanna start bluffing? Do we wanna bet like uh six chips here?
I don't think we polarize, I think we just stop a little bit. Two or one?
Huh? Two X pot, twenty percent of the time. Looks pretty polar. There's some of both, though, like your idea isn't wrong, I just think fives, it's kind of the wrong portion of the range for it.
Call this guy up and the five. Oopsie, no five. Okay, question for everybody, would we call here with pocket five with the five of spades?
Maybe, depending on, maybe depending on the size of the bet.
This I would not.
Well, if you catch, if you if you catch lightning in the bottle, it's if you had spotted five of spades, it's a blank and you can get paid off big here.
Yeah, right, you can scam here, yeah.
So it's a fold.
Pocket five with the five of spades?
You got like.
Definitely fold.
How much do we need?
I think I call here with the five of spades, take one off.
I don't think we're getting a price.
Well.
We can also get scammed.
Bet might a little too big.
You need like a pocket eight, a little bit of straight interaction, I guess.
And they beat the sevens at least if he has king seven suited or something here, I don't know.
Yeah. Fold.
Slivers. Okay, we get this pay. Is this a three set room?
No, cuz there's a straight possible, I think.
Lock up equity?
Like on the Broadway boards, it doesn't quite apply.
So is it just a check?
Typically follow the rule, we have nothing range advantage, I'm gonna continue big.
You can maybe bet third, I don't, this doesn't seem like a big bet.
Oh wait, is that three bet pot or is it a single raise?
Single raise.
Not single raise, but. Completed equity, I don't know if we bet big.
A jack here, I don't think wants to bet big.
Also that.
Spade, okay, we can bet big, I don't know.
What does our range want to do, though?
I feel like, yeah, the range probably is going. What do you do here?
I think we're betting third a lot.
Our range is gonna bet big here.
Yeah.
I really disagree.
Yeah, I think I think our range would be fifty to sixty percent.
Well, the thing is, there's locked up equity, so we can't really blast it here, right? This is what keeps us from betting big, the locked up equity. So it has to be a small bet, it has to be a low frequency thing as well.
Yeah, I guess our I guess our pair of jacks is uh also beating his pocket pairs that he's calling, so I guess. Probably betting big, it might be a mistake because of our pair.
Yeah, for a lot, just because of locked up equity, you could flop the straight.
Well, I don't like betting.
We have a queen, we have a jack.
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, go ahead Kelly.
I don't like, I don't like betting big with this specific hand, but I think our range definitely fires three quarters pot. Here.
Well, the thing is, you got locked up equity, so it you can't.
Uh, it's not necessarily locked up, it's not three to a straight.
Is it not?
Not consecutive.
Look at this, there's no big.
You just a bet third a lot.
Yeah, I wasn't arguing for the bed size, I was just saying that it's not necessarily locked up equity.
Well.
There's a straight on the board, what do you mean?
Well, usually when we see that, it's just three quarters in a row.
No, locked up equity means that they're they can either have a flush or a straight. Like if they have king ten and Rangers locked up equity.
Yeah. So yeah, locked up equity can't really.
Wait, we also have the jack of spades too, which is. Yeah, counting against us, so this is why we wanna go small.
So.
The third or a check.
So checking sixty percent betting small forty percent and then a hand like jack off. Makes sense.
No big bet, so if it would be ace, queen, nine.
Oh, yeah, that would be.
We would bet big then, right?
Yeah, I think so. But checking here. This is good, this is bad.
Those are the ones I was saying earlier, the the ace, queen, eight, the ace ten, eight, like those are all great to bet big.
Yeah.
Where it's like lots of gutters, but we have all the two pairs, we have all the sets. Um, alright, so what was this check, check?
Yeah.
Check is still good.
Yeah.
Do we have big bets on those boards against Dylan? Cuz they have all the two pairs except aces too and all the sets.
Only.
Yes, there's no big bets.
No, like on ace ten eight two toes. It was mainly betting just like sixty percent, it wasn't going crazy. I mean.
Big bet.
When it did bet.
Yeah.
Well, here it's mainly small betting still, I don't know.
Black betting here or third pair, not really?
I don't, what what are we gonna get to call here that we be? Under pairs.
After after he checks the uh the turn, I mean, I think we can maybe check call, call up.
Yeah, to get a check.
Yeah. He's just got that queen, that's what I would be afraid of.
Check.
Full.
Fold, yeah.
You mix a king queen every now and then. No. Okay, ace, jack, six, rainbow. Feels like we checked.
I think we bet a lot here, don't we?
Yeah, but it's garbage.
I think our range wants to bet.
I think.
I don't think our hand wants to bet, but I think our range does cuz we're pre-flap raising.
I think this is so bad, maybe you do wanna bet it, like bet small here.
We block a lot of the folds, we're targeting though, like nines and eights.
Good point.
I don't hear a good reason to bet, yeah.
If we had like, if we had twos through fives, we put pressure on so much of this range that I think that's a better seat than this hand.
Ah.
They don't have twos or threes in range.
See, they do bet small sums, though.
Hmm, we're low jack Nick, I think we have, we have at least threes, right?
I'm betting a lot here.
Oh, we're a hundred big ones deep, that's right.
Nine eight suited bets.
Forty percent of the time, sorry.
Then you wanna bet sometimes when you have no equity.
Exactly.
Usually in position or like um at least you want backdoors or something.
I don't know, out of position here, betting with no equity.
The two set, well, he probably he doesn't have aces, he probably doesn't have a lot of jacks.
We can turn some stuff. It's it's just about targeting his auto folds and it's like you're never gonna call anything with his hand, so if he folds, you're winning. Just absolute garbage. I would just, I'd do it with the other three nine eights where I can turn a flush draw at least, right?
I'm gonna check here or you wanna bet?
I size up, I polarize.
You know.
Can we check flop? No, we bet third flop. Oh wait, we did check flop.
Yeah, we check, check on the flop.
If we check flop, we're just giving up with this hand.
Five percent here.
You wanna bet anyway, Kelly?
Yeah.
What's the logic?
Win the pot.
Okay.
That's the logic, I got shit and I wanna win the pot, see eighty-three percent.
Yeah, you got some slivers. I was just give up. And they just they just.
Did it raise some?
You're the best hand.
Yeah, we have that.
And it's not a spot where you get the river and you're like, they don't have an ace, they don't have a jack, like, I don't know, they can't really have anything.
Yeah, what about this spot here? Ace low low in this scenario from what we've seen.
I think our range checks, right? Our range checks.
Yeah, we learned it.
Oh.
Oh.
Beautiful card.
It's pretty relevant, he he doesn't have many twos in range.
Yep, true.
So what do you wanna do, bet? Some amount?
Yeah, I'm gonna size up.
Like fifty-five or like?
Uh, like eighty-three, maybe a little bit overbetting.
I agree.
Yeah, we don't have six, seven in range and they do, they're not gonna let us do this.
Low jack, we might, low jack, we might.
Uh, I guess we do have six, seven, I guess we do.
So with the micro bet instead.
I'm a, I like, yeah, oh baby.
Okay, so we have it, now what? How do we proceed?
Overbet.
Some overbetting, some checking and some bet tiny.
Yeah, I agree, I like.
Thirty.
I need the next all in.
I don't know, I would only go one thirty-one, honestly.
I would, I would maybe get some bluffs out of them.
There's no raise if he has full houses.
I like checking here.
If we bet big, we take away all his bluffs.
We lose to full houses, Ken.
He's got straights in range, he has full houses probably still.
Like black betting or checking.
Okay, so maybe checking.
There's no way I'm checking.
Mike's black betting.
Everyone's wrong.
No.
Yeah, like the small bet, someone said that.
Six into nine.
I said some small, but yeah, I thought it was mixing everything.
Hey, yeah, he's gonna call a signs.
Feels like we get more out of an ace there. I bet our shit's gonna raise.
Pair boards, pair boards are the one we can bet them all, so give it a shot.
Out of position, you can sometimes size up.
Hmm, no.
And we have a spade.
From what we've seen, this, that, it's pretty much only small.
And the thing is, he's got better aces in range too, I wasn't finishing my thought, he still has ace, jack, ace, queen, some, so.
No, this is the ace sideboard you check the most.
Hey, check, check, we got a pretty strong top pair, we gotta polarize, I don't know.
I think it's a bit small.
I think I bet small.
I like polarizing.
I don't think it's small, you guys say small, Kelly and Nick?
Small.
I think it's.
I'm team small too.
I'm always going thirty-three here, a hundred percent of the time.
Okay, well. Not wrong.
I think with forty big blinds, that's it's probably a, you know, thirty-three, thirty-three, but with a with a. Being as deep as we are, I think it like prefers the bigger bet.
Oh, I wasn't really betting big at all.
I'm still betting, I'm going for value, seven bigs.
Seven.
Yeah, I like betting with the ten of spades here.
Yeah, the spade feels good, right? To bet, it's gone small.
Super small.
What do you, what do you? Like you're, when you bet, when you bet sixty, like you're shopping, like he just calls you for the job.
They can call with a queen, river queen, people love calling when they hit the river.
Seven there?
We have to call with the ten of spades.
Maybe.
Yeah.
I mean, it's an easy call. So that's, I mean, it's probably an easy fold. Simple as that, yeah.
Even a machine don't bluff.
We saw one earlier, Ken, where there actually were no bluffs.
Uh, I've seen, yeah, I've seen sims like that, it's amazing.
It was a double paired board.
I think we're gonna check seventy percent here.
And he bet called the turn and he raised the river. It was only.
Check eighty-four percent.
Range, I mean.
Oh, range seventy.
Just surprised there was so much small betting this deep.
Check again.
We can start shenanigans and bet super small, no?
We're out of position, it's different in position.
Yeah, we can start the shenanigans.
I'm a, I'm a big uh.
Guys didn't believe you when I said lots of double checking.
I like to play defense, I'll just check again.
Oh my goodness.
I just played the main event with five hundred big blinds. So there was a lot of limping, no three betting. Four, five way pots every time.
That's just live tournaments, it's not anything.
Kelly, was it the five K or the ten K? Kelly, was it the five K or the ten K?
Huh, this is a ten K.
A ten K, yeah.
Cash?
Pretty sweet tournament.
Did you cash?
No, no. No, it was uh.
You didn't fire another bullet, you broke ass?
You can't. Was it fun?
It was brutal, I all my premium, I played the button twice in uh four levels. Yeah.
How how is that possible, Kelly?
I was dead, card dead on.
You're playing any two, you don't need cards to play, we've seen you play many times, Kelly.
Wait, how many levels?
Well, not four, I should say four hours, I shouldn't say two levels, yeah, they're two hour levels.
Gonna say, that's a whole day.
I'm really surprised you didn't splash.
It was almost a whole day, it was almost a whole day, Ken, I played the button twice. That's how bad it was, how 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 card dead I was on the button and the big blind. I got all my premium hands under the gun, which was horrible. I got all my premium hands under the gun, which was horrible.
We fold a six.
Do we? The suit of days.
Ace six is like the shitty one, though.
I know, I know, but. I'm personally in game always folding, but here I don't think I can.
Yeah, it's fold.
Oh.
Yeah, it's it's a fold.
Is it the only one? Yeah, with a seven. Oh, even a three deuce, so, okay.
Well, ace six is dominating kings.
Ace queen, jack, locktuck equity, so we cannot bet big. It's gonna be bet small. And then is our range betting a lot on this texture against the button? Ace queen, jack, rainbow.
Yep.
Probably betting like forty percent. Check again, right?
I think if it was a flush draw, we would bet more, right? Hmm, are we betting more or less?
Often, you mentioned.
Yeah. With range, not with this hand.
Uh, I think less often cuz his calling range is more suited heavy and our opening range is more offsuit heavy.
Yeah, but our hand is more at risk when it's a flush draw, or at least the board is more, it's gonna change more often. Right?
Yeah.
So let's see.
This is the same flop we have with the king jack hand except for the flush, right? Except for the flush draw.
Yeah, I would check here to looking to check raise.
I think this is a check.
I don't think you're raising.
I don't think you're raising either.
I don't think you're raising.
Ah.
Your check calling.
Ah. Okay.
By the way, I have every.
I don't know if we have a range.
By the way, I have every hand IV piped in the main event documented.
Oh, yeah, really? How?
Yeah, I do. And we can't, we can't, they're all three, four handed multi-way pots.
But what do you mean documented? How did you get them? You wrote them down or?
I wrote them down, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Look at all the big bets.
Yeah, it's betting big, right?
That was that was in position, right?
Ooh, look at this. You guys are right.
Yeah, we don't, even, and he's not even supposed to bet small.
And then when he see, just goes bigger, I think we raise less. Wow. And when he pots it. Yeah, there's no raising at all with these jack. That's funny.
Yeah, stuff gets um, it's definitely different when you're deep.
How uh, on the cash game uh charts, I've never looked at those. How deep do those go? How do the?
I think two hundred?
Yeah.
Two hundred, yeah. Not four or five hundred. Okay.
So we bet. Here we are in the turn. Are we sizing up to for sixty percent?
We bet he called. Yeah, we're sizing up.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, I would do eighty-three percent.
Both sizing are fine. Who you bet? We're gonna call? Oh, the great flaw.
Like you had this exact scenario.
Yeah, yeah. And then it was not that same board, but would we continue with the five of spades? Or like last time we fold the five of spades?
No, with this small of a bet, we would call with the five of spades.
You wanna call her with the five of spades?
I bet ten percent.
Hmm. You can't even mix folds with the five of spades. Thinking of five of spades here is a little bit overrated. But sevens, what about sevens? Just one pip above. The six, hmm, not that much, right? I thought it would be at least full frequency. Eight, hmm, makes things still. Raise this one up. Ace jack six.
Check, check.
Yeah, sure. How often do you bet here with your range? I think it's like seventeen thirty, right?
Where you're checking, checking seventy or betting seventy?
Checking seventy.
Uh, yeah, it seems about right.
And are are we polarizing or is it only small? I think it's only small.
It might be more like sixty forty. And we get to have some like half pot betting.
The closer we get to fifty fifty, the more we're gonna polarize.
Ace jack six rainbow.
Too high card with the like nut rainbow. He has a lot of a six.
It's better than ace jack five.
I think we check and he checks back even if it's some aces. Yeah, so majority bet though. Check again.
Think so. So.
I'd go five.
We gotta size up, right?
Tim's back on the featured final table. Uh, the first four get a ticket to the WSOP, you're a main. Cause he got a big spot.
Very nice. How many, how many left?
I don't know. I just came back to look at it. Ten, there's uh, it looks like eight. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Is it eight or nine?
Drop the link in chat.
It's on Twitch. Poker Room Kings. You want the link?
Ken is not gonna paste the link.
Tim's what?
Was that yesterday that Jaffe won that?
Yeah.
End terminal?
Paste the link.
Uh, where's um chat? Let me see. There you go. You got it. Danny put it in.
Oh, no.
So, yeah, I was gonna say for the other spots like this, we were going two point five on the river. And I was wondering if we might stick to that theme. Should we switch this discussion to watching uh Tim and critiquing him live?
Look at this. It's obviously. I didn't think it was.
Yo, it's Tim. Why did I think he would be bald?
I don't know.
I don't know.
I thought he would look more like that dealer.
Think all of us Americans are bald.
Queen eight o in the small blind, R five. Sixty bigs, thirty bigs putting pressure on. I think it's a fine raise.
Is it?
Thirty bigs from the small line? No, I'm, I think he.
Is it not a limb?
I think the pocket fours should jam over Tim's open. But they didn't. I'd have to look at uh, you said there's a lot of ICM here, right?
Yeah.
Wait, how many are left?
Four.
Final table.
How many left, Ken?
Uh, it's eight or nine. Whatever's, I don't know how many they put at the final table. I didn't.
Maybe he can't jam then. Yeah, that's.
Uh-oh, there's nothing.
Dude, just snap raised.
Oh, he bet, oh, that's like pretty sweet cuz he just bets one big line.
Dude, he could have turned like a ten or a queen or something. You let him off the hook. Yeah, I don't like the raise.
I'm behind you.
Commentators trashing it too. Hit pause and then hit play again and I think it'll uh like catch up to live. If you're behind somehow.
So one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
Alright, let's keep it open on the side. We'll alert if there's anything happening.
Yeah, all I'm doing is gonna watch this, so I'm not fucking studying. This is a big spot.
Well, yeah, or we could change the study session to just critiquing a final table, like stop and start a new one.